Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, March 5th. It's no one's session. If you'd put your phones on silent ring please. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here. Can we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Prayer.
Everybody bow here, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today as for your guidance. Wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to participate in important decisions. Allow us to grow closer as a group and support the bond of our community. Fill us with your grace as you make decisions that might affect the community and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, and for the pursuit of truth, for the greater of glory to you, and for the service of humanity, we ask these in your name. Amen.
Amen.
You've all had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? There are no changes? Make the motion.
Make the motion approved.
Make the motion.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is petition of citizens.
Okay, I guess that falls upon me. Mr. Chairman, we've got seven people here that have signed up for this evening. Michael Satcher?
Shacter.
Forgive me, sir. I do apologize.
If you'd give us your name and your place where you live in the county.
I'm Michael Shacter. I live at 1711 Tuscarora Rims Road in Craven County. This is the Joneses' district there. I would like to thank the Craven County Board of Commissioners for postponing a decision on the resolution to support the construction of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline until there was an opportunity for public comment, so I thank you. The representatives from Duke will, of course, tout the benefits of the ACP. And to be clear, I'm definitely not in favor -- not in -- I'm definitely in favor of economic development in our county. Beyond, you know, I'd like to see beyond Cherry Point, Warehouser, Bosch, and Moen. I speak for myself here as a 40-year resident of Craven County and for other residents of this county who you represent. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline will have little benefit, if any, to our county and to the citizens of eastern North Carolina, either now or in the future. I could talk about the possible environmental damage as the pipeline crosses 300 North Carolina waterways, including the Neuse River. I could talk about environmental justice as the pipeline goes through Native American lands and some of the poorest communities in eastern North Carolina. I could talk about methane leaks into our air from the fracked fossil fuel gas that will continue to increase the heating of our Earth's atmosphere and oceans. Fracked gas is definitely not clean energy. But let me talk a bit about the economic effects on Craven County residents. We will be paying for the outcome of the ACP even before it is built. Duke Energy has proposed a rate hike for electricity, starting with raising the base mandatory rate from $11.3 to $19.5. It's really should $11.13 to $19.50, I'm sorry. A 75% increase. That is the required payment before any electricity is even turned on or used. This will affect all consumers, but especially the poor minorities and the elderly on low and fixed income. And Duke is also asking for an increased payment in the per kilowatt rate, which will be 16.7% increase in resident -- for residential customers. An average increase of $17.80 per month. Duke Energy, as a profitable, powerful monopoly corporation in North Carolina, proposes to use half of the money from our increased payment in that rate increase to build electrical generators fueled by that fracked gas from Pennsylvania through West Virginia that they hope will be coming into the proposed pipeline. By the way, most of the -- most of the other half from the payments as consumers will go to cleaning up the coal ash mess. We are being asked to pay for their mistakes. And that's just the beginning for us as consumers, paying for the pipeline because -- that's just the beginning of us paying for the pipeline. Because once it is built, there will be even more rate increases to maintain Duke's guaranteed 14% return. But there are alternatives to building the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. Does that mean I have?
Yep. You've got four minutes.
Uh-huh. Can I finish? Can I say -- all right.
Make one sentence, that's it.
One sentence, all right. Our area and the entire state would be actually -- would actually benefit from the increased development and use of truly renewable energy resources such as solar, wind, and geothermal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And...
Robert Golden?
Yes, my name is Robert Golden. I'm a resident of 494 Alexis Drive in New Bern in Craven County. I would like to speak against the resolution in favor of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. It's not quite clear to me why this resolution is out there, given the fact that the governor has already -- the state has already given a go-ahead. And I am a little curious about the source, which I assume is Duke Energy. The fact is, in the last 30 years in the United States, there have been almost 8,000 pipeline explosions with over 500 killed and $7 billion in damages. This is dangerous stuff. Another interesting point is, and it just came out today, Duke Energy spends approximately $80 million per year to influence government officials, civic leaders, news media, and the public. They have a staff of 105 and a $20 million budget for public relations. The fact is, we as consumers pay for their efforts to make them look good. It's in Duke's interest to claim a demand for a pipeline that they, in fact, have a financial interest in building. And I do have a document that, if it's at all possible, I'd like to enter in the record. If I can't, I can't, but I think it's interesting information.
You can give it to the county -- the clerk.
All right, I'll give it to the secretary. Thank you very much. They have an interest in, and this, the document explains the rather complicated financial interests, but the fact is that Duke will make money from building this pipeline. They don't have to really indicate -- they don't have to -- we have to take their word that there will be a demand for the pipeline. The reality is that although the economy is growing, energy use is relatively flat because of increased energy efficiencies, some of which is in this building itself, and also because of increased use of renewables. The pipeline is not needed now. It may never be needed, but the fact is, whether it's needed or not, we as consumers will pay the bill. Thank you for your time.
Richard Friend.
Richard Friend, 3507 Taylor Street, New Bern, and obviously Craven County. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman Marks. It's a pleasure speaking with you again about our request that you demonstrate support of equal rights for women by passing a resolution supporting the Equal Rights Amendment. In the past, I've spoken about the moral obligations we have, we all have, for supporting this amendment. Those moral obligations still exist and will not be extinguished until the North Carolina Legislature does what is right and passes the Equal Rights Amendment. At a previous session, there was some suggestion by another speaker that there were substantial legal impediments to the amendment and that such impediments should be used by you as an excuse not to act. To remedy that suggestion, I brought for you tonight copies of a well-respected law journal for your edification. The William &amp; Mary Journal of Women in the Law is a highly respected journal published by the College of William &amp; Mary. This article, entitled "The Equal Rights Amendment: Why the ERA Remains Legally Viable and Properly Before the States," directly addresses those issues previously raised by the other speaker. And this is a well-documented, well-respected article. It's cited, if you search for documents looking for the legal questions surrounding the viability of the Equal Rights Amendment, this document is at the top of the hit list. It's well worth reading. I request that you take a look at it and then take the appropriate action and pass a resolution supporting the Equal Rights Amendment. I have given copies for each of you to the clerk, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Helen Robinson?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Helen Robinson, 1906 Cuyenne Court, New Bern. It's been eight months since we started working on this equal rights thing. Last summer, we began attending these monthly meetings, asking for your support. I've learned some things about how local government functions, and I've also seen how much you guys do for our community, and I want to thank you for that. We've watched the animal people persist as they continue to raise the problem of animal We have added to our numbers, and we're keeping on, so here we are again. The elections of 2018 are coming. We know it may take more time and work before enough people in enough states are really willing to stand up for equal rights for women. But we do understand that it took 100 years after the suffragettes started working in 1820 to pass the 19th Amendment in 1920. Black men received the right to vote in 1870. It was 50 more years before women of any race were empowered to vote in the United States. We understand it could probably take 100 years to get where we're going right now, to see that the rest of our basic rights are protected by the Constitution. The question is sometimes asked, why we aren't satisfied, why we aren't satisfied with the protection that we're given by current laws. I want to speak to that for about two minutes and nine seconds.
Six seconds.
I think that you can understand that it's hard for us to trust in existing laws and regulations when some people are steadily working to deregulate anything and everything. It's really not a big secret that some folks are trying to use changes in federal laws and regulations and new executive orders to get rid of rules that seem to us like reasonable protections. I want to give you a few quick examples. Thirteen months ago, in the wisdom of the U.S. Congress, a new law was passed rescinding a restriction that was passed after Sandy Hook, limiting the sale of weapons to severely mentally ill people who had been deemed incompetent. Congress apparently believes that severely mentally ill people should be allowed their weapons. Over the past year, dozens and dozens of federal regulations protecting our environment have been defunded or rolled back, threatening our water, our air, our soil. These studies have been done by the National Geographic Magazine, which is not known traditionally to be particularly an edgy publication. The third example I want to give you quickly is that an executive order was signed recently revoking fair pay and safe workplace rules for women in large companies with government contracts. Protections for women gone with a presidential signature. Maybe you can understand why we're worried and why we're pushing for constitutional protection. So we will persist. We'll be here, working and waiting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seven seconds left.
Ray Griffin?
Amen. God bless you guys, and I'm sitting here thinking, "Vince Paul Northridge, Ray Griffin, Brother Sampson, and all them that worked many years ago on the Ten Commandments." I think you're the only one here now that worked on those, that was participating. And I want to talk about the situation we're in today. There's a verse in the Bible that says, "My anger shall be kindled against them in that day, and I will forsake them and will hide my face from them, and they shall be devoured, and many evils and troubles shall befall them, so that they may say in that day, 'Are not these evils come upon us, because our God is not among us anymore.'" And what has happened in our school system? I deal with the county board system, Craven County School System, and they flat refuse to even have anything to do with the Ten Commandments. We have kicked God out of the schools, and we see the results of what is going on today. We see what happened down in Florida. Back years ago, Jerry Prescott, many of you probably know him, taught school, well, guy down in Pembroke County, in industrial arts, we made gun racks. We made them for a fundraiser, put them in the back of our cars back in the 70s and in the trucks. And we took our guns to school, and we'd leave school and go hunting or whatever. We never had a problem like we're having today. It's really sad, the situation has really changed. We have today kids that are killing kids. We have babies that have been -- are born babies. We have drinking girls and boys, and I worked with the police department, and I remember gangs we used to break up. One out of every five girl in high school now has some kind of SDSs, some kind of sensory tris -- tris documented diseases. But the Board of Education, I got a letter back from them simply saying, "We cannot do this. We cannot do anything with the Ten Commandments." I thank Brother Sampson for that night of his stand, and all them that stood that night and said, "We need the Ten Commandments." What has happened in our school system? We had a senator the other day said, "Something is going on. We don't understand what's going on, and what we're doing is not working. We need to put the Ten Commandments back in the school." The other day, if you've seen on the news, they are doing this thing, putting up banners that, "Thou shalt not murder." "Thou shalt not murder," and marquees and different things. Isn't it sad that that was in the school system for over 200 and some years, and the Ten Commandments saying, "Thou shalt not murder," and now today they want to put it back just in one banner? And it's sad, they made a banner, "Thou shalt not steal," because so many of the kids were taking stuff out of the locker room. And it's sad that they weren't in the school system for over 200 and some years, until in the 60s and 70s, and they decided to take the Ten Commandments out, do without prayer, take out the name of Jesus, do everything they can to shut down the Word of God, and look where our school system is going today. Look what happened, and nothing is going to change unless we change and we do something different. "Thou shalt not murder." Sad what is going on. Our kids today seem to have nothing to do. They're hung up in technology. They're hung up in computers. Matter of fact, there's a big game out tonight now that they are telling people not to watch because they -- they are not to buy because the children are getting hung up in it and they're watching it, and all they do is spend time coming home from school and watching these games of violence and different things. When used to as children, we got out and we don't -- we went hunting. We didn't have any problem. We didn't shoot anybody. But today, it's just a normal thing, it seems, ever since 911, to come and just take a gun to school and shoot some people. But remember what it said. It said, "In that day, are these -- not these evils coming upon us, because our God is not among us." We've kicked God out, put the devil in, let him go, do what he wants to do, and we simply are sitting idly by and say, "There's no better way, no remedy." But there is a remedy. We can do something. We stand up. People like the Board of Education don't want to listen to nothing, that is reason. I got back this letter from the lawyer, said, "We can't do this." Simply said, "They're afraid to even stand up and take and make a change."
Thank you, Reverend.
Mr. Hal James?
I'm Hal James. I live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County, and I'm the chairman of the Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association. And on behalf of taxpaying citizens, I have two observations on tonight's agenda. The first is the Social Services Budget Amendment. It's just $40,000 to add to the revenue account for the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. According to the attachment on the subject, that brings the total of that budget item to $397,395. The attachment also shows that the total for North Carolina is $36,402,610. The last federal budget figure that I could find was for 2011, and that was $3.3 billion. Who knows what it is now? And who gets all that money? Well, in much of Craven County, it's the city of New Bern. Now, the fellow that spoke before me mentioned that Duke Power gets a lot of it. But anyway, in New Bern, they have a monopoly on electricity sales, and it keeps the price very high. And I resent paying taxes in New Bern without representation. Does that sound familiar? The Economic Development Report, there's no way to tell from the agenda that what Mr. Downs is going to report. I hope he plans to shed some light on the results of the big $822,000 gift the Moen Corporation received from the taxpaying citizens. Has Moen fulfilled its promises? I've discovered that the memorandum of understanding was a little vague on that subject. In that document, Moen agreed to create 75 jobs, paying an average of $619 per week. I talked to two people who were employed to work at Moen by an intermediary company named Pick Group. I was told that Pick was paid for their labor and kept a substantial amount, around 40%. One man said he received $10 per hour and the other $7.50 per hour. One said that after he was employed there three years, he could tell that he would never get enough hours to qualify for any employment benefits other than the wages. He also said he was shuffled around among Moen, Bosch, Carolina Technical Plastics, and several other corporations. The other man said he never got over 20 hours at $7.50 per week in any one week. That's less than $150 per week. Were all those high-paying jobs promised? Did they ever materialize? I really would like to know. I'd like to know more about the employment practices of these corporations, because I don't think they're being fair to the hard-working citizens of Craven County and nearby counties.
Thank you. Glenn Fink? Mr. Glenn Fink?
Again, I'm Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road, and I'm going to be brief. I speak in favor of the pipeline. It was said this evening that customers will pay for the pipeline, and that's true. That's a well-known, well-founded business model. That's who pays for things, is consumers of those items. What most fail to realize is the alternatives that was suggested around the renewable energies is that most of those are highly subsidized by the government, and we've seen a lot of the solar panels go up. You folks passed some legislation or ordinances around that because of the experiment that will end up causing in the future. But what most people don't realize is a high portion of those are not paid by consumers. They're paid by taxpayers because of the subsidies. So I'm in favor of clean renewal -- I mean, I'm in favor of clean fossil fuels for our area of the country.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public comments section of this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, minutes of February 19th, tax releases and refunds, military family of the quarter, and do I have a motion? Motion approved. Second? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff Merritt for the Department of Social Services, Budget Amendment.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I bring before you tonight a budget amendment regarding our Low Income Energy Assistance Program and a reallocation of funds from the state government. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let's have a motion first.
Five, four, three.
Discussion. Mr. Weiner?
Commissioner Weiner? Jeff, we've increased by 40,000. Catawba and Mecklenburg have decreased by 1.15 million. Now, is that decrease because they could not use the funds? It was taken away from them? They returned it? How was -- how was the...
Counties were asked to look and see their rate of spending, and that program runs through the end of March 31st, and look at their need, and counties were asked to see if there was still more of a need in the community based upon who was coming in and the amount of funds that were being extended, so counties actually were able to, you know, ask for those funds or allow funds to be reverted. But the state ultimately has the power to revert funds, you know, without any -- the county requesting it to be given back or asked for anymore.
All right, so we requested this amount?
Yes.
Where do we stand right now on our initial $357,000?
Right now, without that 40,000, there's $30,995 left. I think that was as of 4:10 this afternoon.
And do you know how many people that served?
I don't know how many people that served overall. I've got some numbers for the last week, last four weeks, how many approved applications that we've had, and that doesn't count the number of people that are in the households. So I can't do it as that total.
I mean, how many households?
The week of February 1st through February 7th, 129 households. The week of February 14th, I mean, excuse me, February 8th through February 14th, 96 households. The week of February 15th through February 21st, 92 households. And the week of February 22nd through February 28th was 65 households.
Now, can I continue?
Yep.
Are any of these duplicates, how do we know, or do we keep a record? Do we have duplications?
Well, this system is actually through the NCFAST system now, so it tracks it through there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion?
Just curious, I mean, people typically applying for this, or you seek them out based on their income?
No, people typically apply. They're aware of the dates of when it starts.
This was additional federal funds?
Yeah.
That came available to the state of North Carolina, some of this pot that you're pulling from now?
This is actually the original amount of funds that were given to the state of North Carolina in the Energy Block Grant that were set out for lead funds, so this is not any additional new funds. They're staying within the amount of funds that were given to the state. They're just moving some around to different counties based upon need.
Two counties gave $1.15 million back.
This is a mandated item, isn't it?
Yes, leaves a mandated program. We run the program until the money is exhausted or either March 31st comes in.
So basically, the county is just holding the money, and we're told to pay it out.
Right, and any money that's not spent in a March, the state will take back.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second?
So move.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Downs, Economic Development.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
A little maybe tardy in this update, but you all have had busy calendars, so I'm about a month late. But nevertheless, here to give you my economic development update for the past quarter. As usual, I'll follow my normal format, starting with product development. The map that you see on the overhead, and I'll point to it so we're just very clear, the part that says Craven 26. Pointing that out, product development is something that we've spent a lot of time talking about within economic development and the Craven Herd Alliance. This parcel that you see outlined in blue on the map is affectionately known as Craven 26 through Warehouser. It's Warehouser Real Estate Development Property, and they're And they're wanting to put this property into active development. So earlier this, excuse me, in February, I placed this parcel into the Duke Site Readiness Program Application Series, and they've accepted it. So this 650 acres will go through the Duke Site Readiness Program, which, as a refresher, we did one ourselves last year. But basically, it means they're going to evaluate the site from A to Z: location, utilities, other infrastructure, soils, wetlands, and things like rail and others like that. So it's a good program for us to get a site like this. And in fact, this site is contiguous to about another thousand acres that Warehouser has up there. It potentially could be added altogether and make a mega site, and Warehouser's pretty excited about that. And good news, additional good news from my point of view is there's no cost to the county for this. Warehouser's going to foot the bill for that. And obviously, with the Duke program, they'll be covering the cost of that evaluation. Also, with the county's help, we were able to complete the Executive Parkway Extension and a new road at the park. If you haven't been out there, I'd suggest that you go out and take a look at it. It's turned out very nice. The contractor did a very nice job for us, and I think all of us have been a part of that process and seeing the end result are happy with that. In addition, because of that road development, we're now looking at some of the parcels out there, and we've had a local firm do some initial concepts of a lot at the park, placing about a 20,000 square-foot facility and evaluating stormwater and those sorts of things. So we have a preliminary plan for one of those lots. And if you'd like more information on that, I can talk more about it. Next to business recruitment, last month, I took a trip to Dallas. And why this is significant is I met with seven site selection consulting firms, and these are firms like Jones Lang LaSalle and Moore Partners and NAI Robert Smith. And so the point is, is to get our name out as a county, to express to these folks who do this on a daily basis, trying to cite companies, relocations, and other things, to expose them to who we are as a county. It was a very good trip. Again, made contact with all these site selection consultants. And really, the bottom line with those sorts of interactions are, again, opening their eyes to the possibilities that we have in our county. As I've said to you many times, when we market ourselves, we're sharing with the world all the great things that we have here in Craven County, also the things, the companies that are already being successful here, like BSH and Moen and others. So it was a very good trip. Also, if I can get this to work, as I've mentioned to you in the past, we've worked locally with Lenore County and Wayne County in establishing the North Carolina Aerospace Corridor. We now have, through the help of the Southeast Partnership, a new website, and this is an active website. And you can see, it's pretty basic. I can't get my mouse to work. I'll just do it the other way here. It's pretty basic, but it shows all the attributes of our counties. And most of all, getting back to the first page, you can see our map there. It shows the various assets. But again, this is a marketing tool for us. We've gotten a lot of good feedback. And again, in talking with some of these site selection consultants out in Dallas and others through the Southeast Partnership, I'm very excited to see an asset like this pulled together. So that's very good. 27 site selection requests since my last update to you all. Ask any developer in our area. Ask any developer probably in the southeast of the United States, maybe even the entire United States. Activity is way up. There's been a lot more activity as far as looking to relocate, looking to locate new facilities. And so the more activity we have, the more chances we have. And happy to report that I just found out today that we made the shortlist for a fairly sizable project. The overall investment is about $8 million initially, and then over five years, creation of almost 500 jobs. So again, we've made that shortlist. I'm pretty excited about. Also, the next edition of the Craven County Magazine, hopefully, all of you have seen last year's edition, but the 2018 edition will be out any day now. So I'm pretty excited about that. Again, we've gotten very good feedback on that, and many of our partners in the region have seen our magazine, and again, pushing that out to beyond our region, beyond our state. Onto business retention and expansion. Currently working with Jack and the Craven Works Alliance on a project for one of our existing industries in the industrial park. It's a small project, but it hopefully will leapfrog into a bigger project for them. Currently, about 15 jobs and about a million-dollar investment, which, again, should leverage into about 40 jobs at the next phase. So that's exciting. And hopefully, have more to tell you about that at our next meeting. Small Business and Entrepreneurial Development. As you're well aware, the Entrepreneur Center is open. Happy to report that we have over 30 members, and we've got all of our offices filled. It's been very successful, in spite of our inability to actually get out and promote ourselves. So we're looking very hard right now at trying to come up with creative ways to use the limited funds that we have to promote the facility, attract new members to come in there. But we have promoted it to a variety of folks who are, say, outside of the target audience, and we've done pretty well. I had a visit with the high school students from New Bern, from one of the business marketing classes out there. They loved it, and they wanted to see more. Actually, shared it with the Carteret County Chamber, because if you're familiar with Carteret County down in Moorhead City, they actually have their own small incubator, and they've been trying to figure out how to make it successful. So they came up to see us and what we've done so far. So those are all positive signs as far as the Entrepreneur Center goes. And then lastly, Training and Workforce Development. Hopefully, you all heard or saw some of the news about on February 6th, we had the CTE Expo. It was our first expo of that sort. And just a real quick rundown of how it worked. We had over 15 companies there. We had the various teachers from the high schools, as well as instructors and other resource people from the community college in various pods. And the idea was that the students that come through would get to experience what it would be like to take classes in high school, then move on to community college, and then move on to an actual position here in Craven County. So all eighth graders in the entire county came through this event. It was over 1,200. And it was, again, very successful by all accounts. The folks that were there, the community college, the industrial people, and obviously, the schools felt it was very successful. We're going to be doing that on an annual basis. So I'm pretty excited about that. And also to mention, the industry folks that were there were very pleased at the effort. And again, that's what this is all about. You've heard me talk about workforce development a lot. It's really about making the effort to not leave any stone unturned as far as doing what we can do locally to support our existing pipeline, to grow that pipeline, and then to attract other folks in. So again, very successful event. I've been making some rounds over the past couple of weeks with the college. Again, another program you've heard me talk about, but it's really gaining some steam, and that's a county-wide apprenticeship program. BSH Home Appliances, Bosch, they are well-known for their apprenticeship program. And apprenticeships are another area of workforce development that's gaining a lot of traction across the United States, because people realize that the best way to get good employees in there and to keep good employees is to get them ingrained in your culture, to train them up the way that you want them trained up, and to ensure that they have the skills, soft and technical, to make sure they can do the work. So the community colleges right now, they've been awarded a $200,000 grant from the Duke Foundation, and that grant will pay for 17 students. I say students, that's probably not completely accurate, but 17 individuals to go through an apprenticeship program. It's 8,000 hours of both classwork and floor time within an industry. We've already got three industries signed up. We've got BSH as a partner. They're not participating because they already have their own program, and we've been out talking to others. But again, this is great for us, because it takes our own, either existing employees in some cases, but also the students that graduate high school, jump right into an apprenticeship program. They become a journeyman, and at the point when they're a journeyman after those 8,000 hours, they're either employed at that point with that industry, or can be going anywhere else within our county or anywhere else for that matter. But again, this is something, a program that's governed, if you will, by the state, as well as the federal government as far as apprenticeships and journeymen and that sort of thing. So they'll actually have a card when they're finished. So it's pretty exciting. Again, all the industry that we've talked to, Hatteras, Craven Wood Energy, International Paper, Carolina Technical Plastics, Chatsworth, Moen, they're all excited about it and all very much eager to participate. And so the bigger picture of this is that we'll establish this apprenticeship program for an ongoing, in an ongoing way, so that when the next batch of students are ready within the schools, they'll not just have BSH to choose from as far as apprenticeship, but they'll have BSH and Hatteras and Carolina Technical Plastics and on and on and on, so that we can place 12, 15 a year if we're real successful. So again, something that's, I think, really promising for us here in the county. Oh, there it is. So this is the next cool thing we've done. At no cost to us, it's just been some staff time and some volunteers within our collaboration. We have now created this new logo for workforce development across our county. I've been working hard since I've been here to bring resources together, make sure there's not a lot of duplication of efforts, certainly not any redundancy, but also to improve the interaction with our local industry when it comes to workforce development. There's a lot of resources out there, but it's really difficult as an employer to get through those resources, understand what fits and what doesn't fit, what could work for you as a person hiring people or needing to train people, and what's not. So we've been working hard to do that. So now, anything within the county that is considered workforce development will be under this new brand and this new logo. Now, we all realize, as a group, we realize that this might get confusing, because we labeled our job fair, Craven Works, to begin with, but that's just one of the elements now that's going to be under this Craven Works moniker. So, and speaking of the job fair announced to the world, and we'll be doing this many times in the next couple of weeks, March 20, at the Craven County Convention Center at 12 o'clock, run from 12 o'clock to 6 o'clock, will be our third annual Craven Works Job Fair. We already have 40 employers lined up, many names that we'd all recognize, and excited about getting possibly 60 or 65 employers this year. And one new thing we're doing this year, and this is not really for the public, mainly for you to understand, we've, again, decided to do a little new thing this year where we're having the first hour, it'll be a preview hour from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That first hour will be for high school students who have been hand-selected by the schools, who are undecided about what they're going to be doing come just a few months from now in June when they graduate. So the idea there is to bring them in and expose them, again, to the many opportunities that exist here in Craven County, and hopefully give them some guidance as to how to connect. So again, we've got Hatteras, we've got BSH Home Appliances, we've got Craven County Schools, Craven County, the city of New Bern, and many, many more. So looking forward to another good event, and have a lot of good support for this event. The ENC Media Group, I'd like to recognize them. They're doing a lot of promotion for us at no cost to the effort. So as always, I zipped right. Oh, I'm sorry. One last thing. Right before the commission meeting tonight, I was over, you might remember me talking about a program called Weibo. Through the Entrepreneur Center, through a grant the Entrepreneur Center got, there was a program where we were able to train up a select group of aspiring entrepreneurs, and they had their graduation tonight. Four out of the five folks that took the class, or classes this term, which started back in August, graduated. But again, it's another way to grow our own, and I'm pretty excited about that. So again, I probably went way too fast, but in the interest of time, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. Somebody had asked a few questions earlier about the Moen project. Since I was involved in that from the get-go, I'd like to maybe, if you don't have time or not prepared to comment on some of the questions, maybe you could write them down and send it to us. I will say this, I think that was a fantastic project. What is the value of that building now?
It's probably not that high. The property itself is probably more around 15, I think, in total. Yeah. I can say for sure, they did meet their commitment. We didn't. We, as a provision in the contract that they signed, we weren't to pay out the final installment of that grant until they'd proven, that they had proven that they'd filled those positions. I know for certain those positions are filled and still operating. And in fact, Jack and I were in the same room when this happened. Ms. Yvonne Wold announced to us that they're already talking about an expansion at that facility. So it was well worth the effort of us to help them.
And sometimes those things create synergy.
Absolutely.
When I pick up the paper occasionally, they're advertising for truck drivers starting paying $70,000.
Right.
We, the community college, implemented a truck training, driving.
Yep, CDL, CDL program.
CDL license a few years ago. That's a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
They're at, I don't, how many people are they employing now?
Well, their direct employment, which, again, because they have, they always have a component that's seasonal or contractual, their direct component is over 900 now, and their total numbers, total bodies out there.
They do use temporary services.
They do.
I think most, many of your manufacturers do now.
Absolutely.
And the reason is, is that, I'm told, is that there's such a high turnover rate among new employees that they don't want to go through all the processes.
That's correct.
Putting you on their payroll and you not showing up for work, or showing up not prepared to work, or just.
Unfortunately, that's the reality.
Not work-ready, and so they want to test you out for four, five, you know, how long that is. But I think it's six months is what I've heard.
It depends on the position.
It's a standard policy.
Yeah, yeah, very much so. But an interesting development for us here in this county, again, because workforce development has become such a challenge. But Moen and others, including BSH and Hatteras, there was a period of many years where they would only bring in new people that were, that hourly, that hourly class, they would only bring them in through a staffing agency. That's changing now, because what they're realizing is that they can find someone, and if they have the requisite skill, if they have the requisite soft skills, they'll bring them on as a direct hire. So many of our manufacturers in the area are starting to do that, which is a good thing, because it allows for that. If you're that person, you don't have to go through a staffing agency and wonder, well, okay, now I have to do this for three months maybe, and wonder if I'm going to have a permanent position. You can start from day one and have that permanent position. So.
What is the tax, property tax, County Manager on 15 meters?
It's about $79,000 a year.
$79 a year?
Not the county manager, but I did do the math.
I can also tell you, and this is straight from the Moen folks, that because they did what they did here, they were able to make their expansion happen a reality up in Lenore County. That expansion then increased the actual product output from our facility here. And as you mentioned, there's the trucking that goes between New Bern and Kinston on a daily basis. And I know for certain that many of the folks that have gotten their CDL training at our community college have become drivers for Moen in our county. So, you know, there is a multiplying effect with some of the things.
And they are looking to expand at our current facility.
That's what they've said, yes. And I, you know, they're doing very well as a corporation, so.
Are they having any trouble finding employees?
No more than anybody else. And they're actually typically better at it, because they're able to, their entry level is less skilled, because they have a very defined process for producing what they produce.
If I can, Mr. Chair. You mentioned you'd go on to Dallas and talk to some site selectors. Do you have the tools that you need when you go to these?
We're working on it. We're working on it. One of the things, I didn't mention it tonight, hopefully, I'll have the final plan in a couple of weeks, but one of the things that we have just undertaken in the past couple of weeks is a full-blown marketing plan for economic development. This was paid for by the C-1A. It's produced by a firm here in North Carolina that works for the southeast region and does this sort of thing on a daily basis. And what that's going to result in is it's, I've seen the draft plan, but essentially what it does is it tells you in priority what you need to be doing. Now, we've got a website. You all helped with that before. That's the top priority. But then there's marketing materials beyond that. So we're getting there. There's some tasks to undertake over the next.
The stuff that Duke Energy did for us, like.
Yep, that's part of it.
The planning and all that.
That's part of it.
That helped.
Yes, very much so. Very much so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Craven 26. When you start talking about 1,600 possible acres that you're doing something with, you know, that's going to raise eyebrows. Could you tell us the exact location of where this is?
Okay. So our industrial park is right here at this intersection, and I'll point up here for this. That's our industrial park. So this is New Bern, down in the bottom right corner. Our industrial park is here. Tuscarora Rems intersection is, excuse me, right here, right at this bend. Cove City is right about here. This entire, if I can hold my hand steady enough, but that entire set of parcels there, about 90% of that belongs to Warehouser. And when you total it all up, it's well over 1,600 acres. And the reason this is chosen, one, Warehouser, again, as I said, is, they've now decided that they want to put this into the development basket, but also. a transmission line, Duke Power Transmission Line that runs right to it. It also has great connectivity, obviously it has 70, an old 70 bounding in on north and south, and then it has pretty good access to 70 by, through Tuscarora Rems exit. So all those things considered, it's a pretty good site to start with. Now, going through this program doesn't mean it's going to be developed, it just means they're going to evaluate it, and those of you that remember last year, for our parcel at the industrial park, what we get at the end is a report that says, these are the, these are the highs, these are the lows, here's what you need to do to really develop it, and in the end, they might say it's just, just not worth it. I don't think so, I don't think we'll get that report, but that's what we'll get at the end.
The sewer line that goes there to landfill, is it big enough capacity in the system?
Well, that's, that's what has to be determined through this process, is they'll look at the capacities, they'll look at the, the, the literal infrastructure capacity as well as the, the paper capacity or otherwise at the facilities, and it's very possible that the sewer might have to travel to Lenore County. Now, that's, that's a reality, but they'll look at all those things and let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sampson.
Commissioner Sampson, I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm really glad that they've got that truck driving class out there to the Community College, because about two years ago, my son wanted to take it up, but he had to go somewhere else, he's driving the truck right now, we're driving all over the country, he, but he, he had to go to a school in another area in order to get that training, so it's good that we got it here, our kids will be able to take it right here. That's a big job, truck driving, they make good money.
There's a, there's a huge demand for them right now.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Timothy, can you, first of all, thank you very much.
Sure.
Can you comment on how the relationship is going with the southeast regional partnership? And I would imagine that we're probably going to be looking to re-up that operation, is that something that you would advise that we do?
If you're asking me today, I say absolutely. The, the, the return on the investment, from my point of view, is, is well worth it. Just as a refresher, the southeast partnership, what they do for us is they, they find leads, they're a lead generation effort. They also are a partner, arm-in-arm partner with marketing. The website that I showed you early, they were instrumental in getting that finalized and up and running, and if you take a chance to look at it, you'll see at the bottom, they're actually the contact information. As you can imagine, if there's three counties fighting for leads, you know, it's good to have at least one that can, that can take those leads. So, I'd say absolutely, they've been very good to work with. My experience, again, going to the various events, the one in Dallas last fall, I went out to Greenville, South Carolina with them, also went out to Las Vegas, top-notch group as far as what they do, and, and I think anybody that's been in business knows, you know, you, you do what you do, and you do it well, you're going to be successful. They focus very much on marketing and lead generation, and they do it well. That doesn't mean that there aren't areas that I would suggest for improvement, but for us, here in this county, I think they've been a very great partner.
The Small Business Development Center, what sort of resources do you think you need, and how might you go about getting them? Is it something that we need to be mindful of as we budget moving forward, or how do you, how do you anticipate dealing with those issues?
Well, I, I, we've been successful because we've, why say we, I think the center's been successful because of the nature of, of the, the facility, and there are a few things, I think, that would be good, although I would not recommend that they come from us, just straightforward. There are partnerships with local industry that we need to make, that we haven't fully exercised yet. Certainly, staff is a question, that's a big question mark for us, because if you don't have anyone there, then when something arises that needs addressing, then, you know, what do you do? And you might lose customers that way, but to staff someone there full-time just doesn't make sense. So we're trying to find that, that happy medium right now, but to directly answer your question, I don't, I would not recommend anything at this point. I think it's more of a, the volunteers that are involved, including myself, I think we're just trying to get to a point where we can figure out, you know, where we all can make the maximum impact.
A couple of months ago, we had the workforce development folks, the lady come before us, and she gave us a lot of economic information. How's the relationship going there?
Well, again, the folks that are actually doing the work, it's good, it's very good. We, we actually had a meeting this morning with a group that is trying to, again, coordinate the interaction between the resource providers, myself, the college, the Workforce Development Board, and industry, because the worst thing you can do is knock on the door, you know, five times a week with five different people asking the same questions. So we've refined that. I think the partnership's good. I will say unequivocally, there is a lot of work to be done from the state perspective on workforce development. There's a lot of people who do this on a regular basis, who still are asking what, what, what's going on, but they're making an effort. But I, I do think that's an area that, if we, if you care to talk further about it, I think there's a lot of room for improvement, from the state level and the regional level.
We, we should be clear here, that the county pays absolutely nothing into the Workforce Development Board here.
That's correct.
This is solely a state and federal program.
Right.
This board has been accused of putting money into that agency, and in fact, it is not true at all.
That's correct. Their, their money, their funding, and, and for the most part, they are a pass-through. Their funding comes from things like WIOA, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. So they're really a, a pass-through for the most part, but yes, that's correct, we don't, we don't fund them at all.
The invitation that was extended to them to come before this board was so that we could be educated and understanding more about our economic activity.
That's right.
And, and that's it. Timothy, finally, I, I just would ask, if, if at all possible, if you could maybe give us a little bit of a summary prior to your next presentation.
Sure.
Just so that we have a little bit of a sense as to where you're going, so we might be able to prepare questions and be thoughtful about what it is that you're going to.
Happy to, happy to, with the, with just the.
And may also help the public as well.
The qualifier that some of this is, will be a mystery, maybe.
Right, right, no, we understand.
Because you can't divulge everything.
You've got your super-secret names for projects.
Right, exactly, exactly, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Timothy, I don't expect you to have this figured tonight, but could you give us an idea of approximately how many employees between Bosch and Moa and some of the other companies that you've been responsible for, how many of those numbers are?
You mean as far as growth?
Yeah.
Sure, I can, I can definitely do that. I can, well, from the projects that we've been directly involved with, there's been over seven hundred, so, and, and I'm happy to say, most of those have already been created. And, again, the, the bulk of that came with the BSH announcement back in late 2015, but when you add up Moa and BSH and Minji's and the others that we've, that we've been involved with, it's over seven hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're doing a great job on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda is pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have a termination, Lorraine Mark, I think I know her, she is on the Social Service Board, and she's on the Child Protection Agency, and she just can't handle it all, so she had to resign from that. Craven County Community Child Protection Team, quarterly, we have a Gail Horn, I didn't, wishes to be reappointed. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Stop it. Okay. Appointed by acclamation. Mary Mallard, Department of Juvenile Justice, recommendation will be forthcoming, do we know anything about that, Gwen?
As of this week, they did not have a recommendation.
Okay, does that go? Child Protection Agency, it's the same thing. Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, we have a Debbie Kirkman, Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on the second Child Protection Team appointment?
Yep.
So that is a current appointment, Mr. Camp Flowers, the Social Service Director, is a designated position, is due to be reappointed.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's the difference.
So, do we need to move his reappointment?
If you, if you.
Have a motion?
Move his reappointment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Debbie Kirkman, we spoke about, is, she's still going to be appointed?
I don't have information on her, the Board of Education is a required appointment on that board, and she is the designee that, that they are sending as of now, they have not indicated any interest in replacing her.
And Eddie Games wishes to be reappointed, have a motion to reappoint him?
So moved.
Stop it. Upcoming appointments, Regional Aging Advisory Board, Carolyn Bland and Thomas Pittman, and Voluntary Agricultural District, Diedrich Kilpatrick. County Attorney's Report.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
The first matter before you tonight is a final acceptance of an offer to purchase real property located 1111 William Street in New Bern, property that the county acquired along with the city from a tax foreclosure. The offer to purchase is for one thousand dollars, the tax value is currently four thousand. You'll note that the total taxes at the time of foreclosure was about thirteen thousand dollars, that was primarily due to a demolition by the City of New Bern, who basically paid those costs. The Board has previously approved it, it's been advertised for upset bids, there were no upset bids, and so it is back before you for final acceptance.
Have a motion?
Commissioner Sampson, I'd like to make a motion that be, put this on hold until we can find that the, the people that they sport a contact has been contacted. I'd like to have this put on hold.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This one's already been foreclosed on, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, who are we trying to contact?
I'm talking to In the Big to make sure, I, I want to make sure that they were contacted before this happened.
I think Commissioner Sampson's concerned that, that to back up to the demolition by the City of New Bern, that all the people entitled to notice before the demolition were in fact notified.
Okay.
Okay.
So you are asking, forgive me?
That had to be held up, until we make sure that all these people been contacted.
That the city has contacted, had contacted them.
Had made contact, because I'll let you know why, because hours before the city last meeting, and I didn't even know that my property was on, on the chopping block, and they hadn't even contacted me, and I wasn't even planning on being out there, I happened to be down there, and found this out, and I approached the Board, and someone asked a question, where wasn't he contacted, did you get a signature, anybody sign that he was notified? They couldn't produce it. So I want to make sure the citizens are treated right, and they are, they are being contacted, they are being contacted, that these people know about what's going on, and I think it's high time that we looked out for the citizens who've been here all the time, rather than accepting what New Bern sent over here, and without investigation, and we want to make sure that these people been, somebody has been contacted concerning that property.
Okay, do we have a motion, if there are second?
The motion is to table.
Table for the notice.
Table until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I was talking about motion.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Sampson's in agreement, I believe Mr. Ich will contact the city attorney just to check the file for how these demolitions took place and report back to you the next meeting, Mr. Sampson, that'd be appropriate.
Yes, okay, for the next meeting.
There's no time of the essence on this offer, is there?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Are we doing both, or one?
Well, we can do both at the same time, if you want to.
All right.
Both.
Madam Clerk, that was the first vote, or the table vote until the next regular meeting.
Yeah, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And Mr. Chairman, just at the end of the meeting, we'll be requesting a closed session regarding the personnel matter, and that's all I have tonight.
County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm sure glad I don't have a four-minute timer tonight, because I kept a list, and so I didn't have comments at your last meeting. Just to update you on a couple of things going on in the county, first of all, on April 4th at 5:30, we'll be hosting the district meeting for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It's our first time hosting in some time, so at least we don't have to go to Wilmington this year, certainly get to save on the travel time. That event starts at 5:30, and it will be a regional effort from counties that surround us within an hour or so drive, so pleased to do that. Also, for your calendar, May 30th is County Assembly Day in Raleigh, it's the annual trip we make up there to talk with our legislators who represent Craven County, I look forward to it, I'm sure like you do, that is an early day, we need to be there about nine o'clock, and it's all the way through five, so, I'm going to go ahead and make you aware of that. Okay, second thing, last week, I was asked to attend the News River Study Committee meeting in Raleigh, this is a joint effort between NC DOT, NC Department of Environmental Quality, and North Carolina Emergency Management, this is an effort after Hurricane Matthew to look at long-term solutions for flooding. Of course, as we're well aware, Hurricane Matthew caused a lot of damage from Raleigh to Craven County, along with what Hurricane Floyd was back in the late 1990s. Certainly, these events aren't that frequent, but when they are, they cause a tremendous amount of damage, and there's a tremendous amount of disruption to folks' lives. I can tell you, there are some contracts in place right now with NC State University and AECOM, which is a consulting company, to do some hydraulic modeling, to look at the effects of rain and how it falls in the News River Basin, particularly around the Goldsboro area where we saw so much of that water, where you had twelve to fifteen inches of rain come forward and cause so much damage. One of the concerns I brought forward, being at the end of the road here, is that we make sure we're recognized in this, in this exercise. A lot of what you see represents Raleigh to Kinston, and I, I had to make them aware, and I believe they knew, that the News River does not end in Kinston. And I, I mean, it's kind of a smart comment, but quite frankly, most of their maps ended in Kinston, and that, that was troubling to me. I think, for the Commissioners, every single one of you, myself, my staff, who went out to western Craven County after Hurricane Matthew, you saw what that river can do. And I think some of the misinterpretation we get is folks aren't familiar with Craven County, they assume the News River looks like it does in New Bern, in Cove City, and it's quite frankly, a completely different optic. The News River here is much wider, much deeper, and of course, when you get the western part of the county, it's not so much. But I got some good news from that. One of the things that we had advocated for greatly after Hurricane Matthew and even before was a river gauge in Craven County. I'm pleased to tell you that was placed at West Craven Middle School two weeks ago, we are beginning to test that data, and the state has been gracious in helping us fund that through the North Carolina Emergency Management. I want to thank Director Sprayberry for his hard work in finding the money within his budget, he certainly grasps the importance to us, and when I was able to share with him that it's great when we see data in Kinston during a storm, and we know how the river is, but two days later, we have no idea what it's going to look like in Craven County, and now we'll have that. Hopefully, we'll never have to use it, that's my hope, but it's there if we do. There will be two additional meetings, one in March and one in April to continue this topic, there's lots of data coming forward, I have a packet of information I will share with the Board that I, I brought back with me, I found it interesting, there was some modeling on damage assessments, and we hear about these ten-year storm, hundred-year storm, thousand-year storm, and about what those effects, based on some of the modeling they've done, it's very interesting, but also very complicated. So I'll leave that with you. Commissioner Jones, I understand, has been appointed by the Governor's Office to attend that as well, so hopefully next, sir, we can ride together and chat a little bit on the way, so look forward to that. Let's see, also, I wanted to bring up, I was recently asked by the North Carolina 911 Board and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to serve in a strategic planning role for next-generation equipment for 911, I accepted, because quite frankly, I want to make sure we have a voice at the table. As you're all aware, the frustrations of trying to fund computers and, and items through the 911 Board with our money, which I consider our 911 surcharge money, so having a seat there, I think, is vital, and I would look forward to doing that. The reentry council, Commissioners came before you a couple of meetings ago, and I wanted to get some clarity, there was a, a budget request, I believe for two thousand dollars that came forward, I have researched that and, and verified it, I'm not sure if you'd like to see that on an agenda, or you want to wait till maybe the county budget to consider that, it's completely the Board's discretion, it was for help with their website and also help with some of their office equipment, I think it was a copier and a, and a cellphone, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think we should do that at the budget.
Commissioner.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that we need to, while we are full steam here, we need to continue on, they have to wait for pieces to fit in the puzzle, I believe will make the program even slower, we way behind already. Bohe had theirs in operation, I know, at least four or five years, Charlotte had theirs about eight or nine years, and Raleigh, all up. And Raleigh, and all upstate, they had that, they are reenters. They've been getting money from the federal government all that long, and we've been sitting here trying to get started. I think we should go ahead and appropriate those funds. I would make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Where are we?
Mr. Singleton, when he came before you a couple of meetings ago, had asked for an allotment of money for a website that they maintain, a copier lease, and a cellphone. It equated to $2,000 to finish up the fiscal year. And I mean, I'd be happy to provide additional information for a future agenda if that'd be more helpful to the board. I just didn't know if you wanted to see it now, or do you want to see it during budget? That's what I made.
I think we should go ahead and see it now, because that's going to hold the program up even more so. I think what, we are doing a great, we are doing a great service to the community. We are way behind, way behind other cities. And we are just playing catch-up with our reentry program. And these other cities already spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars in their program. And they don't have to spend all of that, all of that budget, because they were already organized, they've been on, been on rip, getting all the money they could. So I think we, we are way behind. We having a lot of problems in our society. In fact, I had a young lady come by, was sitting on my front porch, she was Caucasian, didn't have no shoes on, and I don't tell her what she been taking. My wife ran in the house and got her some socks and shoes to put on. She tried to get up with the police department, and it took the police, almost an hour to get there. They did get there, but it took them almost an hour, but it was cold, too, out there on the front porch. She bothered in the house. So we need all the help we can get. There's so many people on the streets now, you just couldn't imagine.
Commissioner Sampson, Sampson, I think what the County Manager is saying is that he gets us more information on it, and we'll go to it in our next meeting.
We'll need more information for $2,000 to help somebody, that way I can see it.
Just going to give money away?
I'm not just giving no money away, that organization has already been working.
I would like to see a piece of paper that identifies what the specific request is.
$2,000, I can go in my pocket and give them $2,000, I'll take it.
You're welcome to do it.
I know, you, you don't get that one of yours getting on the front porch with nowhere to go.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor, now I give a second, I know it's all right.
I got a second on it.
We got a motion on seven.
Yeah. Commissioner Sampson, I think we all support the reentry program.
What I'm saying, I got the motion on the floor, it's up to you to act on it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a roll call?
I was finished with my discussion, Mr. Chairman, if I can. I support the reentry program, I've supported it the whole time, but to request money and it not be on the agenda is kind of unusual, and I'm not comfortable with it.
I fully understand, sir.
I'm perfectly fine on getting it on the agenda and voting on it.
Yes, sir.
Likewise, I, there's, I don't want to belittle anybody else's efforts on this, but I have worked my rear end off to make certain that this happens. And I think that in order to protect the sanctity of this program, we need to make certain that this stuff is done correctly. And if we, if there's a request for money, then let's see it on a piece of paper and bring it forward. Otherwise, the program itself will suffer from credibility.
Yes, sir. My motive was an open request from that entry. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss the ball here and not do it when the board would buy.
I just wanted to say that no one on this board have worked hard as I have to get this program in this county. And I say at least, at least 25 or 30 cities have had this program before we even got it. And they have received government money to help their citizens. And now we are studying, arguing about a few dollars, $2,000. I don't think it's going to break the treasure.
Commissioner Sampson?
But I'd just like to vote on it, see how you vote.
Commissioner Sampson, I think we all recognize the work that you have done for this program. And all we're asking for is that we have more information given to us before we vote on a $2,000.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I think we need to, I need to state for the record also, as Commissioner Tyson stated, I definitely am in support of this program. But I think we set a precedent if we vote on this without having additional information. I don't think that's the right thing to do in spending taxpayers' money, for me not knowing more about this program. And so I would, I would definitely vote no for at this time.
Call for the vote. They can vote now what they want to, I just want to see where they stand at.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Lyner?
This time, no.
Commissioner McCabe?
This time, yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Vice Chairman Dason?
No.
Chairman Mark?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will get a sheet for you.
Yeah.
Call sheet.
Did you want to give out any dates? I don't know if you have them tonight on the budget in May and June, or you want to wait on?
We can, we certainly can talk about that.
Yeah.
I wanted to update the board on the opioid task force, the progress report on that. As you're aware, last month, we were able to come to agreement on the memorandum of understanding with Onslow County, Carter County, and City of Jacksonville on the short-term crisis center there. That is moving forward quickly. I spoke with Sherri Slater, they're getting their paperwork ready to send to Raleigh, and that should happen this week. Locally here, we have continued to meet with our committee chairs, and we should be forming the task force in the next couple of weeks. There's some strategic initiatives I'd like to brief you at at your next meeting to give you a full update on where we stand, but I wanted you to make sure you knew the effort was moving forward. And there's a tremendous amount of interest and tremendous amount of folks who are willing to serve in this capacity, and I think it's really off to a good start. And lastly, last week, Mr. Hodges and I were able to walk through the animal shelter. Progress is being had. We are in the short rows, as some people would like to say, of getting this thing open. There has been some discretion, I think, and I wanted to make sure I was clear tonight with the Commissioners. We are still accepting dogs, but we are limiting the intake of cats at this time because we're transitioning from the old building to the new facility. And while we work and remodel the old facility, and then we'll, of course, move the cat areas back into that building. So if the public would still be patient with this, understand it's difficult, but we are rapidly getting toward completion there. And, Mr. Chairman, my number seven was budget process on my list. As we are becoming close to that, my staff and I will begin working on that next week. I'm going to pull my calendar up, if the board will indulge me, we can talk about May timeframe. I will present the budget to the board on May 21st, and we can schedule work sessions. I know that's a little far out for your calendar, but as our normal process, we would target the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. That'd be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, after you receive it on Monday. And of course, Friday is a holiday, and that would leave us, excuse me, yes, Friday's a holiday, that would leave us, the 28th, 29th, and 30th is also additional days to work on the budget. I'll be happy to go ahead and schedule that if those dates work for the board. We will have our public hearing on June 4th. That's our night meeting. And then, based on previous processes and budget, we would look to adoption on June 18th. As you're aware, we normally have at least one work session between the 4th and the 18th.
Okay. I guess we'll have them get back to us on the dates?
Sure, that's the dates. If there's any date that absolutely doesn't work for Commissioner, if they let us know that, we'll be happy to note that in our files.
Is the 28th not Memorial Day? Is that not a holiday?
28th is a holiday.
Okay, so we can work that Friday, I'm sorry.
So 29th and 30th?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 29th, and 30th?
Or the 25th now, yes. I got my holidays mixed up here.
The 30th may be a little bit of a problem. That's Commissioner Tyson's birthday, and I don't want to disturb that.
We'll get extra, we'll get extra meat on the Subway sub that day.
Wasn't that the Assembly Day, too?
Yes, so 30th would be out, because that would be County Assembly Day.
30th is out.
Mr. Chairman, that is my report, unless the board has any questions or comments for me.
Does anybody have any questions, County Manager?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Tyson?
Chairman, I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you will, and not trying to take up too much of our time tonight, I have two things I'd like to share with the board. The first item I'd like to bring before the board is a possible resolution that I'd like for the board to consider. I definitely will state for the record, I am not one that likes to jump and pass resolutions without having adequate time to look at them as a board, and so I respect that, if you feel that way. But March is National Women's History Month, and we have prepared a resolution that I'd like to bring before the board, and it states, whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledges the important role of women in our society, and whereas women have made significant contributions to Craven County and the state of North Carolina, and whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners believes that women should be respected and protected from violence at all times, and whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners believes that women with equal qualification to those of men should receive equal consideration and compensation for jobs and other opportunities, and whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners asserts that all women should be able to work in a safe environment, which is free from all forms of discrimination, harassment, and violence, and whereas Craven County salutes all women locally and universally, who have throughout history shown tremendous wisdom, initiative, and fortitude in all the walks of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes March the 1st through 31st as National Women's History Month, honoring women who fight all forms of discrimination against women. Be it further resolved that Craven County is committed to eliminating all forms of violence and discrimination against women, promoting the health and safety of women, and affording them economic and business opportunities. Further resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners strongly supports the role of women in Craven County, and the contributions they have made and will continue to make in building a community that is a better place to live. Mr. Chairman, I, as I have stated before, and I will not, it's redundant to some in what I've said. I was raised by my grandmother. I had the opportunity to go live with my grandparents when I was seven years of age. My grandmother passed away in July, one of the greatest women that I ever knew. She taught me about Jesus, she gave me opportunities in life that I would never have had otherwise. She was a wife of a farmer, a politician. She was a stay-at-home mom. She also helped on our farm, she worked in the church. And, you know, I know all of us that sit on this board have ladies who have played a vital and important role in our lives. I can even say to my wife today, I thank God for her and the role that she plays. And so I think that, you know, in recognizing the month of March as National Women's History Month for Craven County, and also as being recognized, I think, across the United States, I'd like to offer a motion, if the chairman will entertain it, that this board passes resolution.
I'll make a motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion?
Standing, Mark?
No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One additional, one additional item I'd like to bring before the board, and not trying to get into too much detail here. All of us have a number of concerns that come before us on a daily basis. I think roadways, ditches are probably always at the top of the list for the district in which I help represent. But over the past few months, the number one issue that has been addressed to me has been about animals, the concern of animals in our county, and our animal shelter. As the County Manager stated, we're very blessed to have invested taxpayer dollars in an outstanding facility that's going to be state-of-the-art. It will increase the capacity that we will be able to house animals in, and we look forward to the next month, when we will be able to open it up and begin a new journey. But with that, with having a new facility, I think we've got some things that we need to work on. And as I said at the beginning, not to get into too much detail because of personnel items, but I would like to, with the chairman's agreement and the board's agreement, that we ask the County Manager to begin looking at some options, and how we can do a better job as Craven County Government, through our animal services, in offering a better public relations with our citizens. I think we've got to work on it, that's the number one complaint, and I think our citizens deserve that.
I would think that the board would agree with you, Commissioner Jones.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lyner?
Sir, a couple of things. American Legion Post 539, which I remember, is starting their drive again for the Boys and Girls State Program sponsorship. They've been doing this for the last couple of years. They're getting two boys and girls from each of the high schools. It's upcoming seniors go to Kattawa College for a week, studying government. If anybody's interested for a sponsorship or a donation, I can definitely put you in contact. It's a great program. If you don't know enough about it, I've got paperwork and everything here on it. They did it last year on their own, and it pretty much took the bank from us, so we're going out for donations and sponsorships to try to get in it. The kids have come back. Last year, we had seven girls and one boy, so I don't know if the boys are not interested, but they put their applications in. The post will screen them and interview them, and then make them a selection. But it's a, it's a great program if anybody's interested. Myself and Commissioner McCabe will be at Havlock Middle School tomorrow. Everybody else is welcome for the iPads. Step out for, for that school. And on Tucker Creek on March 20th, they will stand up their iPad program on that, and you're more than welcome to be down in that area. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner McCabe?
Well, you took something out of my mouth, so I don't mention about the iPads. Last couple of weeks ago, some of y'all wasn't here, that Governor Coofe awarded me an award. It was the Old North Carolina Award, which is a second highest award you can receive for doing good work in your community and through the county. The Order of the Long Beach Pond Award is an award that you have to have 30 years of service. I don't have 22, since I was in New York for a little while. So hopefully that I get my 30 again, and I throw another ball in there, and we have the governor at the time, he gave me the old, I mean, the Order of the Longest Pond. And you don't get that, that type of recognition by sitting on your butt. I have worked very hard and very diligently in my community and through the county. I do more work than I was supposed to do as a Commissioner. And it stands, it speaks for itself. I tell everybody, if you want to see what I do in my community, go see my boat, go to the Craven County Web, and you see what I have done. So some people go around and listen to you all, Commissioner McCabe have done this, have done that. If you don't read, don't go to meetings, you're not going to know. You can't just sit on your butt and look at the stars and say, hey, tell me, star, what going to happen? You can't do that. So you want to know something about my community? Ask me. If I don't know, I ask someone to bring information back to you. So I have worked Verhorn, and I deserve their award. Now, I've got more to say, but I'm going to cut it short. Thank you, all, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I'd just like to give kudos to the women, and I remember how I was born up, and I remember my mother, and I married my wife, and had, had poor girls and poor boys. And I want all, all my girls to have the same opportunity that all my boys have. I'm always ready to vote for the women to have their rights. I want everybody to have the rights. I have been denied my rights a lot of times, and I know how it feels not even having my rights. rights. And I don't know when or where the kind of going with this issue, but I'm with you all the way. Another thing I'd like to say is, why I was pushing for the weight on these properties, because I feel like our citizens deserve the best. And our citizens have been here that long, we have senior citizens been here all their lives, and then come up and the property had to be, had to be taken from them because they're not able to pay the taxes. And I think, being a county or city, that we should look out better for our seniors to have something to offer them if they get so, that their taxes behind and they can't pay them. Maybe all these programs we got, that, that, the money, and it look like we could overall even fill our application that we want to give money back, overall, help people pay the taxes and save their home. Person worked 50, 60 years sometime longer to pay for a home, and then come up with laws to take the home away from them because they're not able to pay the taxes. I think that's injustice, and that's all I'm concerned about.
Okay. Vice Chairman?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Fine. I only have, I was at a Highway 17 meeting, and just want to bring you up to date on the Mills Street to Bridgeton on 40 to 43. The right-of-way of utilities will begin on 2020 for 7.7 million, and construction will begin in 2022, which will be 28.5 million. And US 17 Washington bypass to Williamson, acquisitions will be started in 2019, and construction beginning in 2020 for 51.7 million dollars. So, those are two roads that we are looking to get completed, and finally, it's on its way. If there are no other comments by the Commissioners, I would ask, oh, we have a closed session. I'm sorry about that.
Most of them closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed session.